Okay, we need to begin the meeting.
Mike?
Steve, no could be here? He's not going to be here.
He's in DC.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order on Tuesday, March 26, 2013 at 7:01 PM. We'll begin with roll call.
Michael DeLecky?
Here.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
Steve Becker has been excused. Barbara Doss?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Tick Bonan?
Here.
And Ken Killian?
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the March 12, 2013 council meetings. B is payment of bills. C appointments. I have none tonight. D is licenses, one and or two-year operators licenses for premises licensed to traffic, infamatted malt beverages, and intoxicating liquors. E is the walk permit for the National MS Society, the Wisconsin Chapter fundraising walk. And F is the street closing for Market Street at City Park for the farmer's market Saturday mornings from May through October. Is there any item there on which you would prefer separate discussion and action?
No move to approve as presented.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mr. President, I will tell you that I am sending a request for additional information to the city attorney regarding one of the items in his report.
Okay. Well, okay, that's further down.
I mean, it's his report, so there's nothing to not approve, but I just have requests for information. You'll all get a copy.
Okay, well, the motion to approve the consent calendar carries. Richard Christensen would like to speak tonight on citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, and we ask that please limit comments to no more than five minutes. If you'd come forward, please. State your name and local address.
I live at 10 South Third Street here in Platteville. I have a couple of concerns that I'd like to bring to the council's attention, so I'll just read what I've scratched up here. On January 8th, the Common Council went into closed session for a city manager performance evaluation. On January 22nd, the Common Council went into closed session for a city manager performance evaluation. On February 12th, the Common Council went into closed session for a city manager performance evaluation. On February 26th, the Common Council went into closed session for a city manager performance evaluation. And on March 12th, the Common Council went into closed session for a city manager performance evaluation. I'm worried that something is wrong. I can understand the Common Council going into a second and maybe even a third closed session to finish up a performance evaluation, but five times? No, that shouldn't happen. The Common Council should go into closed session only when necessary. The goal should be to go into closed session as few times as possible. Otherwise, it might seem the Common Council is trying to do things outside the view of the public. The Common Council has already gone into closed session, five meetings in a row concerning the city manager, and they are scheduled to do so again tonight. It's difficult to believe that discussion at all of these sessions is limited to city manager performance. My concerns have nothing to do with the city manager. I'm concerned that many times, items are being discussed in closed session, and this information is being withheld from the public. I'm concerned that open meeting rules are being broken.
Thank you. I just want to note one thing. We have gone into closed session a lot for those who believe as much of this as you like. That's what we talk about there. We don't do the other things we're not supposed to do. And part of those discussions were to develop a system for evaluation, and that is the context under which those closed sessions happened. And so it's not a continuous, we're discussing his performance, discussing his performance as it might appear. And tonight is to discuss the employment contract, so appreciate your comments about that, and certainly, we all respect the open meetings law. It makes it harder sometimes, but it's better than living in a place like Russia where they just do it, so. Moving on tonight to reports. We have committee reports. Water and Sewer Commission, Steiner, Killian, DeLecky?
Nothing.
Have no addition.
Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Killian?
The thing I want to bring up is that the Plan Commission, I believe, next Monday is meeting and discussing one issue, which is renaming city parks. So I encourage people to come to that meeting to voice their opinion about renaming the park. The Parks, Forestry, Recreation Committee has given the recommendation on the renaming, and I assume it'll be sent to the council at some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Freudmark Animal Trust Care Fund Committee, Douse?
Nothing.
Okay. Under other reports, we have the building inspection report and department progress reports. Are there any items there on which you'd like to ask questions or make comments?
That's where I made my question of the attorney. I'm sorry.
I knew.
I was at the wrong place in the attorney.
I knew.
Are your questions on building inspection report?
No.
City attorney.
It was on the city attorney's report.
Oh.
Okay, moving on to item six on the agenda, action items. Tonight, the first is ordinance 13-08, amending the official traffic map, specifically the bicycles may use full lane. Do we have a staff discussion of this?
Yes. Community Safe Routes Committee is recommending change to the official traffic map regarding bicycles on Adams Street, especially eastbound on Adams approaching Chestnut Street. There was an accident at that intersection where they turn onto Chestnut, where the bicyclist received a very severe injury, and the Community Safe Routes Committee proposes a bicycles may use full lane sign to encourage bicyclists to use the full lane like a motorcycle. One, to tell the bicyclists that that's where they should be riding, and two, it will inform other road users that bicycles are allowed in that traffic lane. And what we're proposing is that if you approve this, that we just install it on one of the posts currently used by a school zone sign.
Where is that sign located? Where would it be located? I think you showed it beyond Elm, between Elm and Chestnut?
Between Elm and Chestnut, yes. There's an existing school zone sign that's about mid-block.
When this came for information, I specifically asked if the Safe Routes Committee, Community Safe Routes Committee, had reviewed just this intersection, or was doing a comprehensive review, or if this was going to be a one-at-a-time, one-at-a-time, one-at-a-time kind of request. So has the Safe Routes Committee done a comprehensive review?
They have not. The last meeting, they did not have a quorum when I was going to bring this request back to them. I do not know of any other place where this is that big of an issue, where there are a lot of trucks and the potential for that kind of action. But we will look, we'll present that to the Safe Routes Committee for further attention.
I think some of this is the right turn, no stop, which it doesn't require people to come to a full stop and then assess where they're at and who's around them. Howard, I have one other question about this. We were, Ken and I were talking about this the other day. Is there going to be a sign in the oncoming, from the oncoming direction on Chestnut Street alerting the trucks and semis and so on going north on 81 that a bicyclist could be in that full lane and sitting there? Have you ever seen those trucks cut that corner? They also have the semis essentially cut across that traffic lane. And of course, if there's nobody there, they'll cut across it. If there is, they'll belly out further and try to make sure. The concern we had, and we didn't know how this was, is a bicyclist who's using the full lane say stopping because they intend to go straight on Adams. Are they going to be visible or lost in the clutter to a semi who's making that turn? They don't see them, they think that the turn is open, and now they're clipping that person coming in the opposite direction. Is that, has anyone looked at that?
I don't believe so.
I know if we're making something up here, that's a problem. Just occurred to me that sometimes, would you see the cluttered background with the old bike shop and the other stuff there, and trucks and so on? Is it easy for a bike to disappear in that? And they don't see it, and they cut that corner, and now we have the same problem. And I don't know the answer to that, and Ken and I talked about it, we didn't know. And I don't think there's anything necessarily wrong with this, just the concern of that, are we going to create a problem in the other direction? So, Ken?
I do not favor simply a single sign being placed between Elm and Chestnut. I think there needs to be another sign which gives warning that the bicyclist may be in the full lane. And I was thinking about this, and I thought, could we put up a sign that says at the top, ahead, and then have this bicycle, bicycles may use full lane. Have that farther down the street, so now the drivers, the truck drivers and semi drivers, they're warned that there could be bicyclists in that full lane.
We can look at that to see if that's...
Because I think there's simply one, one sign, and you're almost to the intersection, and you may miss that sign when you're driving, and suddenly, maybe somebody comes out in front of you, and so that's my concern. No, it's a matter of judgment that the person on the bicycle, are they going to be looking back? I hope they look back. And then, how much space do they leave as far as turning in front of a vehicle? I mean, a vehicle going, how fast would a vehicle be going coming up to that sign? They might be going 30 miles an hour. That's 44 feet per second when they go 30 miles an hour. I realize they're going to be slowing down at the curve, but still, if you're in a, even in a car, or a pickup, probably in a trailer, you could be going a pretty good speed through that intersection. So my recommendation is to put another sign which says ahead, and then the sign underneath would be bicycles may use full lane. And ahead is a legitimate sign as far as for bicycles.
So you're suggesting two signs then?
I'm suggesting two signs. Place another one that's farther down the street toward the curve where it goes into Lancaster Street. The DP deputy after decide where to put it. But the idea is to forewarn people that they may be seeing a bicycle person in the full lane.
Perhaps it could say, curve ahead, bicyclist may use full lane.
Other questions or comments?
And the other thing here is that we heard last time that the bicyclist was 85% at fault. I mean, supposedly, it's true now that the bicycle person can ride in the full lane. That's legal right now.
Yes, it is.
So, really, that, the bicyclist should not have gone up alongside the vehicle, because it said that he caught up to the vehicle, so he should have really stayed behind. We're blaming the victim, but the victim didn't make the right decision. And so, now we're trying to correct the situation. We're involved judgment, and the judgment was not good.
Well, it was also probably the type of vehicle. It was a pickup truck with a really long trailer on it.
With a trailer, right. And the trailer has a different turning pattern than the semi.
But it is an unusual intersection, so.
My recommendation is to have another sign, two signs.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I think Mike also makes a good point about warning northbound drivers that that situation occurs. I know that there's a manual that gives regulatory signs and plaques for bicycle facilities. It seems to me that should be a way to sign that so that there's warning. I have no problem with having to pass this, but I think that signage is critical, and I don't think one sign is sufficient. So I'll make a motion to adopt, I have to see what the...
13-08.
13-08, noting that in addition to the one sign, there's only one sign proposed in Section 1 install, bicycles may use sign on Adams Street. I would amend that to say it would have to have installed two signs, bicycles may use full lane, on Adams Street for eastbound traffic between Elm and Chestnut, and then install a sign warning drivers going north on Chestnut Street.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Okay, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Bennett? Where are you putting signs now?
I'm not putting them. I'm just saying, two have to come from...
You're recommending signs where?
I'm two, I'm not recommending the placement. I don't really, I'm saying, there have to be two signs on Adams Street as traffic is coming from the west to the east, and there has to be at least one sign for the traffic that's going northbound toward Lancaster.
Okay.
So three signs. Two for one, two for southbound or eastbound, whatever, and one for northbound.
Okay, roll call, vote please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B under action tonight is ordinance 13-09, creating Section 22.09 per N.I. regarding bicycle parking. Brief staff note?
Joe would normally do this. He's not available at this time, so I'm substituting. Originally, this came before the council with a recommendation of 50% bicycle parking be provided at 50% of the amount required for vehicle parking. That was, there were concerns that that may be too high, and the council deleted this section from the original ordinance and asked that it be reviewed again. This has now gone back through the Community Safe Routes Committee and the Plan Commission, and they're saying that for multifamily uses, number of bicycle parking spaces shall be at 25% of the automobile parking requirement, and for all other uses other than single family, which requires zero, and the multifamily, which I just talked about, the number of bicycle spaces shall be 10% of the vehicle parking spaces.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I would also indicate that the RDA brought this up first and recommends the adoption. So I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 13-09, creating Section 22.09 per N.I. regarding bicycle parking.
Second. The motion is second. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C tonight is Resolution 13-07, establishing 2013, the year 2013 goals for the city manager.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Roll call, vote please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item D is Resolution 13-08, conditional use permit for the Iverson Construction Asphalt Plant. This is the annual request to do the asphalt plant. There was some discussion about processes to keep dust down, which they've answered for us, pretty much a routine thing.
Well, somebody suggested the last meeting, I think maybe it was you, that you would prefer the driveway area be paved?
Yeah, my comment was about the chemical spraying, because the Roundtree branch is not that far away, and I just wanted to make sure that if they did use chemical spraying, it would not be harmful to the area for runoff. Or, you know, paving, it seems like they're a paving company, maybe they'll choose that option, and I think Joe said that they probably would choose that option. So I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I would move to approve the conditional use permit for the asphalt plant at 1100 East Mineral Street, as written.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
Only that, again, on the dust control, it's pretty nebulous what it says. The app provides dust control by chemical spraying or widening a paved area of their driveway where it intersects with Mineral Street. Again, you know, I don't know. I hope this doesn't become a bone of contention where somebody is saying there's too much dust, and somebody else is saying, we own this and there's not too much dust.
They've had this discussion in the past, and they have, they've managed to control it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Roll call, vote please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item E tonight is Resolution 13-09, requesting the absence of need exemption from Wisconsin Department of Transportation Administrative Code, Chapter 5. Howard?
Yes. One of the projects that we're looking at this year is reconstruction of about 800 feet of Evergreen Road from East Side Road to the east side of the Emmy Roth driveway, bring it up to what we've traditionally done within the industry park. Under this Chapter 75, we either need to install sidewalks, the chapter actually is pedestrian bicycle facilities. Under this project, we were going to stripe bicycle lanes, but we were not going to put any sidewalks along this road because of the lack of use of that area and the topography. If we put in sidewalks in there, we would be requiring additional easements and other things in order to get the slopes to work out right on each side. On the north side, there's a bank, and on the south side, it falls away. So if you put the sidewalks out there, then you either have to fill in on the one side or cut on the other side to make that happen. One of the options that was considered, that we looked at, was if you narrow the road so that it's not as wide as what we normally have out in the industry park, you could potentially put the equivalent of a bicycle and pedestrian pathway on the south side of the, on the south side of the street. You would still require some additional easements so that we could grade out to match the properties. If it's a trail, it would be the similar case as on Water Street. It'd be 10 feet wide, paved, and under the city's policies or practices, the city would be responsible for snow removal on that 800-foot path. How much use it would get, I don't know. The concern by a lot of folks is, one, this is a requirement under the law, and, two, we've had many instances where in the past, people have said, well, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, let's not put something in, and then 10, 15 years from now, when things are developed and people say, God, I wish we would have put a sidewalk in, or how are these people going to walk out there to get to their jobs? And then it's even harder to put in a sidewalk afterwards, because people are, you know, people want to put trees up and do all this other stuff, and so that's the deal. We did do a cost estimate, and what we found is that it's basically a horse apiece. If you, if you keep the road wider and not put the bicycle trail on, it's within a very small amount of the cost to narrow the street and put in a paved sidewalk. Originally, our proposal was to not install one based on the lack of need. If you folks feel that this is important enough, we could, in fact, do as we suggest, narrow the street. Right now, the streets in the industry park are about 41 feet from back curb to back curb. The proposal would reduce that to 36 feet, which is about the width of Elm Street.
Thank you, Howard.
And the Safe Routes Committee reviewed this?
Not officially, because they did not have a quorum.
The people who attended the Safe Routes?
The people who attended that meeting would prefer to have a, the pathway, if at all possible, for future use.
And the rest of the industrial park, Howard? I don't recall any sidewalks or pathways.
Currently, there are none in the major part of the industry park. We do have the pathway along East Side Road that goes from Kmart out to the hospital. It would, it would, in essence, join with that. There is a sidewalk on the east side of Vision Drive over by Ashley's Market, and when and if we extend Vision Drive back around to the other side, the intent would be to include that sidewalk, extend it all the way around.
And would that then connect to Evergreen?
You would have, you would have to connect with Enterprise, the extension of Enterprise coming south.
Well, with all the truck traffic that Emmy Roth is going to have, I don't think it's wise to narrow that street. I would prefer to keep the street the width that they're suggesting and go for the sidewalk exemption.
While I agree that Emmy Roth may in fact have a lot of truck traffic, that makes me believe that we should have the bicycle path, because if there are people out there and we are expecting them to use the road, then we're just creating a situation where we're putting people on bicycles or on foot in harm's way of trucks. So I agree that there's a lot of traffic, and that's why I would support the inclusion of a bicycle and walking path. And the city this year gave a matching grant to the Platteville Community Arboretum to build a bridge. We're working very hard to create trail systems. It seems to me like when we have this opportunity, we should, and as Howard has indicated, when it's not done, then it becomes impossible, even if later you say, oh, but it was a rule and we just kind of like suspended it. It just never, never does get looked at that way.
Would you make a motion?
I'm also in favor, at this point, of putting in the bike path, the bike pedestrian path. And I say that because I have been in the industrial park for various, to go to various businesses, and I see a lot of people walking. I see a lot of people who work in the industrial park area, and just like around the university, when you take a break, you know, a lot of people go outside and walk. It's like their exercise for the day. And so I think it would be much safer to actually have this path. Howard, if the street is 36 feet instead of the 41, and I assume then there wouldn't be any parking, is that going to be 36 feet? Is that adequate for large trucks going back and forth?
Yes. The issue is that when they originally put those, the wider street in, the idea or the intent was that there would be room on the street for staging of trucks, so that if a truck is waiting to load or unload, they could stage on the street for a while until the loading dock was open, and then they could come in and do that. You occasionally see trucks on the street, but not very much. Most of the places have enough room for trucks to get off of the street and stage within their own parking lots. But to me, that was the original intent of the width of the streets. If it's a 37-foot, then we would probably have to restrict parking to make sure that there is no conflict.
But there doesn't seem to be an issue with parking for employees or anything, from what I see in the, in the industrial park.
No. Most of the places have been meeting their requirements and providing vehicle parking There's occasionally some that need to park on the street temporarily, but not for very long.
I, uh, in the seven years that I worked out there at Southwest Logistics, on breaks, noon hours, there was lots of people walking on that, what does that means? Walking on that and we're hopefully gonna have more people out there that wanna walk on that. So we, with the big trucks coming in for the dairy, I would think we would probably need to have the trail there someplace on one of them streets where we could get the walkers off the middle of the street, 'cause that's where they were walking.
Right, exactly. So if we, if, uh, the motion then would be to not approve this exemption, is that correct?
Exactly.
Yep, I'll move that we not approve a Chapter seventy-five, so, site what exemption for Evergreen Road.
I'll second.
Motion is second. This is just a request. Do we want to include in there a request to provide for the pedestrian and bike walkway or we wanna just let it go as it is?
No, I would add that to my motion.
It'd be included.
Yes.
It okay with the second?
I'm for the bike pedestrian path.
Motion is second. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call vote please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
No.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item F tonight is an agreement transferring the Friday and Rite Animal Care Trust Funds to the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin and I think I'm gonna head down there. You wanna do that or?
Oh, uh, I will answer any questions and I will, uh, I will exempt myself from voting. I, I, do I have to request to be able to abstain because I intend to abstain from the vote? I work for the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin.
Just abstain, I guess, that's fine.
So I'm just gonna abstain. Uh, basically, this transfers the money as an endowment to the Community Foundation. Uh, the Community Foundation yearly will provide an amount, uh, that is earned by that endowment to the, um, city, to the, uh, city, uh, finance department, to the city manager. In August, that will be used for the budgeting numbers for the upcoming year and then in the upcoming year, the, uh, uh, when the budgeting is done in September, October, that number will be known. A certain amount of money was retained by the city, um, because, uh, the foundation uses a twelve trailing quarters, uh, to figure, uh, the investment return and, uh, when those quarters are zero, 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 there's not. So that's why the city retained enough to, uh, fund things for three years, Duane, is that right?
Yes.
And I think the charitable fund agreement is there. The money would come directly to the city. The city would, uh, the Animal Care Trust Fund would continue to operate like it does. It would just know how much it gets.
Thank you.
Those were the changes and then the, uh, the city would have report what the funds were used for. That has to be a yearly report that's on, uh, the page. It's titled Schedule B and then on the page, it's almost blank. It says that, uh, Community Foundation will provide the city a platform, a detailed fund activity report, uh, as far as, uh, earnings, as far as fees charged and so forth. And then, uh, I think the last thing is the same as before, an agreement, and that is the memorandum of understanding would be attached, uh, to this, uh, agreement.
Would you care to make a motion?
I move to approve the, um, agreement.
Second.
A motion is second to approve. Uh, is there any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss abstains? Nichols?
Yes.
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item G under action is a sunshade, s- sunshade purchase for the Platteville Family Aquatic Center. Say that three times fast. Burden, if you'd give us a little update on that, please.
This would just be an additional sunshade at the pool that would cover the concession area. Tends to get extremely hot because it is just cement. And we have a grant to use towards this purchase and the rest would come from park impact fees.
And what was the total price of the sunshade?
It's thirty-five hundred.
Is this within the pool?
Yes.
So it's on the east side of the concession building?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's on the east side, it's within the pool. And this would be the third sunshade?
This would be the sixth.
The sixth.
There'd be a lot of demand for shade.
We need trees. Yeah, yeah. Perhaps we should, you know, just transplant some or something. Or cut some down.
Other questions?
I would move to approve the use of park impact fees and the amount not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars to purchase and install the sunshade.
Second.
Motion is second. Was it twenty-five or thirty-five?
Uh, twenty-five would be from the park impact.
A thousand comes from the community fund.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item H tonight is to award Project three dash thirteen, uh, the Fourth Street Reconstruction Project. Uh, Howard, just give us a brief on that, please.
Sure. This project involves reconstruction of Fourth Street from Ridge Avenue to Camp Street next to Smith Park. Um, the intent here is to have the street narrowed on the side by the, uh, um, by the pool parking area and then have the street straightened so that it goes in essence from Camp Street directly up to the intersection of Ridge Avenue. The unfortunate result of doing that would mean that six large trees near the curb bump out at Smith Park by Sylvia Street would need to be removed. My concern here is even if the, uh, um, uh, street was put back in the same place, we cannot guarantee survival of those trees because of the depth that we need to cut the, uh, street, undercut the street for the new gravel and everything, plus we're going to be replacing water and sewer in, and stuff in that street. Our concern is any tree roots would be damaged severely and the trees would die within the next couple of years. However, we, we've, we did put this to the Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee and they reluctantly agreed to allow the removals, uh, with a replacement of at least six trees, basically a one-for-one minimum within Smith Park with a caliper of at least the size planted at the museum a few years ago and we will comply. Um, this morning, I, I was able to get the actual number from Steve Cleefish and it was a five, five-inch caliper tree, which is a very large tree.
Five inch?
Five inch diameter.
Giant diameter. Oh.
Not, not height, diameter. The bark di- the trunk diameter. And so I did speak with the, uh, uh, company that installed the tree, um, for the museum those few years back and they said that they do have some of that size available. Uh, that would be something that we would need to bid out, of course, but we know that there's some available locally that we could use to replace those. If the council allows it, we could even begin replacement in the spring, um, before the construction work because, uh, this would be away from the, the planning. Now, back to the regular part of this, we did in fact open bids for this project on March nineteenth. There were nine bidders. We have a utility portion, one forty-one, eight sixty-five, city portion, two seventy-five, five eighty-one. The overall project is under budget with the Stonebridge Road coming up next. Um, both the, uh, utility budgets and the, uh, city, combined city budgets for both of those projects are under budget and would allow for funding of replacement trees in Smith Park. Uh, and as such, I ha- I recommend award, uh, of the underground contract to rural construction, uh, for the bid price of two thirty-one, seven forty and award of the street reconstruction to Lounger Brothers for the bid price of one ninety-one, zero zero six. I have Dave Dugan, the city forester here to speak on, on, uh, forestry issues if you so desire.
Thank you, Howard. Ken?
I, um, would like to find out, um, about, uh, site clearing. I went to, um, um, Duane yesterday and he referred me to Dan Allen and we looked at the specs and I found a section on site clearing and it talks about trimming of trees and it says all trimmed branches to be treated with an approved tree wound paint that is water-based or shellac. Now, what I'm getting at here is that, um, oak wilt is a potential problem as far as when these trees are removed. And we talked about that some at the, uh, Parks Forestry Recreation Committee meeting. So that, uh, taking the trees out, we, we are going to be exposing roots. The roots of oak trees, they become grafted together. In other words, one tree will graft to another tree so that if we introduce, uh, the disease, and disease is carried by insects, uh, they feed on the sap of the tree and the insects inject the fungus into the tree roots and those tree roots can, with movement of, uh, the water in the tree roots, those tree roots can carry the fungus throughout, uh, the area close to the trees which have been removed. Uh, this one, uh, report that I read from the University of Minnesota said that, uh, they found significant movement within a hundred and sixty feet of the location of infection. So my concern is that we follow a procedure or practices so that, uh, we do not have introduction of oak wilt into the trees that are joining the ones that we're taking out. So you may have questions about this. I have, um, I was not able to find any, any reference about, uh, doing any special painting of roots, uh, as far as, uh, when trees are removed to prevent, uh, introduction, but that is a potential problem. So Howard, do you have any response to that or maybe Dave responding to that?
Dave, do you, could you come up and maybe talk a little bit about that?
Is there something in the, in the specs that I missed? I found about trimming branches above ground, the, uh, the insects can introduce it above ground into the trimmed branches, they can introduce it into the root.
David, introduce yourself, please.
I'm Dave Dugan, city forester with the city. Your potential for the oak wilt's gonna be a lot greater if we try to leave these trees during the construction after all those roots have been cut and we continue to let them decay while standing there. Your chances of oak wilt are significantly less if we remove these trees now before they have the chance to continue to decay and become exposed to the disease.
Well, that's, that's true, but I, what I'm getting at is that you're leaving the roots exposed so that, um, you need to do something right away as far as, um, coating of the roots to prevent the introduction because, um, this is what I read in one of these, uh, publications here, um, if I could find it, but anyway, that's the situation. It, it says within, within minutes, you should be coating with, uh, shellac or paint.
You're saying after we remove these trees? I got something confused about.
I'm disputing the removal of trees. I'm just saying that you're gonna have roots exposed and those roots can be a, uh, means to introduce oak wilt into the rest of the trees. That's my concern. So I, I am, I'd like to recommend, uh, amendment to this, uh, contract. I don't know, Howard, what do you have to say about this, but, um, I think there should be an amendment to it and this is my proposal, that contractors shall use best management practices to prevent the introduction of oak wilt into susceptible trees. So I'm not specifying what you have to do, but you have to, uh, use the best management practices to prevent the introduction of oak wilt.
I think we can handle that. I think we can do that.
Ken, would it be your belief that as, uh, the ground is disturbed, the roots should be coated most simultaneous to any disturbance?
I'm not saying the exact things you should do, but, uh, you could be cutting off the roots and painting the roots right away so the insects cannot feed upon the sap. And this one publication, I think it was from Minnesota, said you should do it right away. You don't, you just, you don't wait two, three days and come out and do it. You do it right away.
I think we can work with the contractors to do something along those lines, especially for any of the larger roots that we find.
I have a question. Uh, the water and sewer on that road right now, where is it?
Right now, the water is on the, um, west side of the road. Uh, water will prob- will go down the east side, the sanitary sewer. There's sanitary sewer that comes from Sylvia Street, turns and heads south on Fourth Street. The, uh, other piece of sanitary sewer is beyond the Ridge Avenue intersection. However, we will have new storm sewer to, uh, uh, collect storm water in that area. Some of it will go north and some of it will come south.
And all of those, it would not be possible? Why would it not be possible to locate all of that and do the deepest, uh, trenching, digging, or whatever you wanna call it, on the east side rather than on the west side of the road?
Traditionally, well, under DNR rules, you have to maintain a certain separation between the water main and the sanitary sewer main. You have to maintain a minimum of eight feet between the two. When you put in a, a new water main, you want to keep the old main live and in place. So what that would mean is, as I explained, the existing water main will, is on the east side, the new water main will be on the west side of the street, the sanitary sewer will go down the center of the street to maintain that proper separation. What that ends up happening is that when the, when the water main is on the east side, that means that sa- uh, storm sewer will generally end up being on the west side opposite where the water main goes so that you have, uh, sanitary sewer in the center and then you have the proper separation distance between them and the storm or the sanitary sewers. It's a lot more difficult to put both on, on one side. You would have to, in essence, put, uh, the storm sewer under the sidewalk in order to make that happen over there and that would encroach upon the private properties along that east side down along, um, from Sylvia Street down to the end of, down to Camp Street. You would end up having the san- sanitary in the middle and, and then both of them there and the road isn't wide enough to do all that within that, uh, width.
While I understand that the current alignment of the road is not aesthetically perfect, has the current alignment of the road led to any accidents or unsafe situations?
I'm not aware of any.
How many feet is the misalignment? Three, four feet?
No, we're, well, going from, from where the road goes down, uh, to the north of Ridge Avenue over to Camp Street, we're probably talking fifteen feet or more.
Oh, it's that.
I would have to, I would have to look at it again.
So almost enough room for diagonal parking?
Well, like I say, the issue is we're going to need to remove that diagonal. I would like to remove that diagonal parking, the old diagonal parking that there used to be when there was a, uh, ball field there instead of the pool parking lot.
Just because you, just because you, we think it needs to be squared up? Not because Not because it's unsafe, not because there are accidents, not because of any other thing, just because we want it to be nice and straight?
It also minimizes maintenance. When there's, when there's less pavement, there's more green space and there's less pavement to maintain, to plow and all that stuff.
But it is a very heavily-used area in the summer when people are at the pool. So we would be removing parking that's available now?
Yes.
But it'll be coming back in the park, right? Parking lot for the pool?
There would be space available in the pool parking lot. Should the council wish to do so in the future, you could add another complete row of parking, about seventeen or eighteen parking stalls.
And then we would also have additional maintenance, right?
Yes.
So it would either be maintaining it in the street where it is now or adding to the pool parking lot and then maintaining it?
If, if the additional parking is truly required.
Other questions? We have a motion. We had three people indicate they'd like to speak and I'd like to have them come forward at this point. And that would be Larry Tryng, followed by Kathy Marty, followed by Esther Pleva. Come forward and please state your name and local address and limit your comments to no more than five minutes, please.
If I may, I'd like to ask you to just pass this laptop down. I noticed there were some pictures, some signs that are placed at the
There's no motion, but they're here to speak. Let's let them have their shot.
I'm Larry Tryng. My address is fourteen thirty-five Cody Parkway, Unit H here in Plattville. This is only just recently come to my attention, so I didn't really come up here too well prepared. And my notes are being passed around there in the laptop. But I do find myself wondering why such a nice, clean street looks like it might not be on the schedule to be resurfaced for another ten years as being done at this time. It, it, as I understand it, there must be like a regular schedule for, and streets are resurfaced like every seventeen years or some such thing.
Excuse me, try sixty-seven years.
Sixty-seven years, okay. Well, that street there looks very nice. That street looks, looks very nice. And I really can't believe that it's time for it to be resurfaced. I do believe that there is a lot of interest in that park. I know there's a lot of people who walk that park. And if the street was redone like it is, like it's suggested, I just can't help but wondering even if the plow is gonna make it difficult for the people to walk on the walkway, the snow that is. I just wonder if fifteen feet on the other end, it sounds like that might even be encroaching on the walkway, the path that's already there. I just ask that this be slowed down and give the, some more people a chance. I understand it was talked, it was presented at the, at the committee meeting. But in the community, I've heard a lot of people very surprised that this is done and believe that six beautiful trees. It might be difficult to work away around those trees, but it might be worth it. So, thanks for the time.
Thank you. Don't forget your, don't forget your thing.
Larry?
Laptop.
I have it right here.
I got one comment for you, Larry.
Although I would gladly keep it.
There's more to a street than what you see. It's called infrastructure and that's what we're looking at. That's what needs to be worked on. Of course, in order to get at that, you've gotta dig the street up.
There's water leaks there in that part, or that's a, there's a problem?
No, it's underground, what you call infrastructure, your water, your sewer. That's what we're working on, on this. We don't just go around replacing streets. We do the underground first. So, anyway.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Marty. I live at Ten Maple Drive in Plattville here. And I appreciate the time to speak to you. I drive past the Smith Park every single day. And I noticed some green axes on those trees and I wondered what that was all about. When I drove by there today, there were signs that said, we are cutting, you know, the trees are going to be cutting down, going to be cut down soon. So I decided I better investigate because those trees, according to the sign, and I have no doubt, are a hundred years old. And I find it interesting that you were talking tonight about sunshade and that we need more trees. Six sunshades would cost twenty-one thousand dollars according to my math. And yet we're so quick to, maybe not quick. I wanna give you the benefit of the doubt that you've discussed this. But if you cut those down, it's hard to replace something like that. I wanted to know why they were being replaced and so I called Esther Pleva, who's here tonight. She has a very large knowledge of what's going on on that corner because that's where her house is located, between right on Ridge and Fourth Street. So I think you'll be interested to hear. You talked about accidents. I think she'll be able to tell you about some of those. I myself, since I drive there, through there every day, noticed that when I am going east, there's a lot more problems than when I'm going north, east on Ridge, than when I'm going north on Fourth. And I think that, Barb, your questions are good ones. Couldn't we go ahead and take out more on the east side instead of that jog where it's at? I think that jog slows down people. Now you take it out, I've seen people in front of me going around that corner. And I think if you take the jog out, it's not gonna slow them down as much. Also, it seems like if you went on the east side, you wouldn't have to worry about the trees. And Mr. Gillian, I really think you have some valid things to say about that. And I hope the rest of the council here really takes that into consideration. We wouldn't need to remove the trees if we went on the east side. And I know that it would take more engineering feat to do that, but I'm confident that we have some pretty intelligent engineers that could do that. And so I would strongly have you consider looking into that further. And maybe we can save these trees that are a hundred years old and we won't have to buy sunshades. And I do walk that path a lot. And I notice on that area, it's shady. Where on some of the other parts, it's not. And it's really warm in the summertime and I would hate to lose that shade. And I know there's a lot of citizens that couldn't be here this evening that are very concerned about this as well. So please consider keeping those trees and trying something different so that, you know, everybody concerned can have more safety. And also we can keep the aesthetics of the wonderful park. And, you know, it bothers me too because we are losing more and more of those trees to wind and things like that. And so it did just blatantly cut them down because they're in our way when they don't have to be, maybe. I really appreciate your considering that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Esther Pleva. And I'm the homeowner that lives on the corner of Fourth Street and Ridge Avenue. And I did get a really nice letter from the city inviting me in February to an informational meeting. And I wasn't in the continental United States at the time, so I couldn't attend. But I had a really good phone conversation with Mr. Crowfoot this evening, for sure so. And we talked about a lot that had been covered this evening. And I pointed out to him that having lived at that site for twenty-five years and my work desk faces Smith Park, I watched that park a lot and it's used morning, noon and night. And when I first built my home there, somebody said, "Aren't you worried that those people coming east, I mean, north of Fourth Street and going around are gonna take out your mailbox or run into your house?" 'Cause you hear stories on the news. And I said, "No." And I said, "My mailbox has been pretty much intact until this winter." And it did get taken out. But it wasn't because of the road. The man's brake system died on him. And he was, had a trailer behind him and he just sort of slid into the mailbox. And he, that was the only time in twenty-five years. But also living on that corner for twenty-five years, I've seen vehicles coming down, going east, okay, toward the old radio station. And that road is narrower and they whip down that road. And there have been, oh, I'd say at least two, maybe three. You'd have to look over the police reports in the last twenty-five years of people parked in the trees at the old radio station because they were going too fast to take that corner properly. So there have been accidents at that corner. And people have been driven their cars into those trees. So what I pointed out to Mr. Crowfoot is that that street's pretty wide there, i.e. because of diagonal parking and the old baseball field that used to be there. And we talked about the speed and how much it's used during the spring, summer, fall and winter. And my thing is that, I said, "Well, the jog has been there and there hasn't been any accidents going from Fourth up north. It's been going east on Ridge." And I said, "Is there a reason you wanna take out that jog?" And I said, "Because I have a fire hydrant in my front yard and I know the other one is down at camp." And I know, I mean, I'm trained as a biologist in my graduate and undergraduate degrees. A shortage is between two points is a straight line. But that's if you're talking about a normal street. We have a really wide street. And I appreciate Mr. Crowfoot's information. He was just really very helpful. And he talked about, just now, about the distance we have to have between, a distance between mains and old and new structures. But we have a wide street to work with. So in the interest of safety, I'd work with that wide street. Move it, move it over toward, more toward the east. You have a lot of dirt there that you can play around with. And then those people coming east on Ridge Avenue could still make that corner and potentially won't hit into things. But if you take all that dirt away, that's gonna be a much sharper corner. And I'm just gonna have more accidents to watch at my house. So all the things that have been mentioned beforehand, I'd like you just to add that to your information and take that into consideration. Thank you very much all for your, for your time.
Please try to make a motion. We try to leave it as it is and hope the trees survive?
In that this is the first time that I've seen this, I don't feel I'm ready to.
We didn't know about the tree situation until one day.
I think we need, do we have a diagram of how that's gonna lay in there? And I heard you say earlier, it's gonna straighten out. By the time you get up at the old radio station, you're gonna kinda be shifted back towards that?
Yes.
So in other words, the corner up there by Mrs. Pleva, that's not gonna change then?
Correct.
Okay.
The, I do have a layout on the table. It's kind of large. We can look at it now or later, look at it later.
Why don't we just take them into here and look at it? You could turn the camera around so people could see us looking at it and at least know what it looks like. I know Howard was trying to show us before and it's really large. I'd like to take a look at that.
Okay, I have this oriented south over here on my left, your right. And north over here, this is Mrs. Pleva's house over here. The park is here. The pool parking lot is here. Oh, thanks. The idea here was that the original street comes up about where you see it here. And then what we would do is we would start angling over and come in. This is where the jog is right now. The, these, this is the stone monument area. The planters. With the entrance into the park. And then, then the curb curves around here. And right now, it comes up this way. And then, then it comes around Ridge Avenue up here. On this side of the street, it comes from Sylvia Street and it turns right here. And the street is this wide, coming all the way up here. And then, then it comes in a little bit by the radio station and then it kinda meanders up here until it comes down and there's new curb that was put in ninety-seven that continues on down towards the north end down here. And here's where Ridge Avenue is. This proposal, like I say, is attempting to align it so that people north and south on Fourth Street, they angle rather than having to negotiate this jog. And same with people on Sylvia Street. They pull more forward so that they can look in both directions a lot easier and cleaner. If you pull the street farther to the east, you make a larger jog in the street. If you leave it exactly where it is, I have a large portion of street that right now, in my mind, is not needed because up here, it's narrower anyways. And what I was saying is, in the future, you could in fact put another row in here for additional parking if it's required. And that would keep this alignment here. If you move the street over here and you wanna take out the jog, then you're looking at taking property from homeowners here in order to make the jog work on this side of the street. To put the curb in the new spot, you take out the six trees that are on the sign. My concern here is that taking out this curb, you have to dig back at least a foot behind the curb in order to, in order to put the gravel down for the support. And the thickness is going to be between eighteen and twenty-four inches worth of break-a-run gravel and asphalt. And I'm not sure what the actual depth is here. My guess is that there's probably maybe six inches of gravel underneath what little asphalt there is. And so any of these tree roots that are here are probably right underneath that six, eight inches of pavement and gravel right now. We're gonna be into those roots.
But with the trees being so old, wouldn't the roots be much further down?
Generally, okay.
They're spread out about the same height as what the tree is.
There's much underground, so it's about that.
Yeah. The folks talk about the drip line of the tree. Basically where the leaves and the, and the branches go. The most critical roots are underneath that drip line. And if you look at any of these trees, it extends way out into the road.
You're gonna replace these trees, correct?
Yes.
Out into here someplace?
We promised, we promised the Park Forestry and Recreation Committee to replace at least on a one-for-one basis. Right now, there are three oaks and three maple trees there.
All five inch?
And the idea would be to replace them with something approximately five-inch diameter trees. Dave is
This is where our trees are located at now in the park. So obviously, we try to find the best possible home in the park for them if it's closer to this area. So be it, we have more open areas out here on these edges and on the other side of the park where it might be a better home for these trees where we won't have an issue with them later on.
So a tree this big will be replaced with something like this?
That will That will...
But it will grow to the other.
We try moving those big ones in, it's hard.
Oh, I know, I know. And I'm just wondering, is there any way at all to not go quite as far into the trees so they could be spared? Do you have to go that into, I mean, could you?
That's what we're trying to show you here. We want this to get straightened out because of this jog here.
Now...
But the jog does slow people down around that corner.
So is the stop sign?
There's stop signs in all...
Stop signs in all directions. And I have not, and I did not intend to change that at this point.
But it's very interesting, and I hear what Kathy's saying. Because, you know, you go in at Walmart, and they put a curve in the road on purpose. And now here, we have to take this curve out of the road. It's like...
And we're going to pay how much to cut down six trees? How much is this project?
And not only that, I mean, you know, whether this is pavement now and we use it for parking, or whether we expand the parking lot, I want to know if, is this all of our property now in front of the radio station? How far back does the city's property go?
The right-of-way is this...
So there would be some...
Black line here.
There would be some room there.
Everybody seeing what they need to see?
Okay.
Sorry about that. We would have shown that if there were some way to do it. But there, that sheet of paper, it looks like it's 10 feet long. It's a pleasure. Try to replace as is and hope the trees don't die?
Yeah, it's one option.
Do we have a count, Dave, on how many mature trees there are in that park?
Roughly 250 trees, give or take a couple.
About 250 mature trees in that park.
I counted 252 one time and 254 the other.
I mean, it's just hard to count if you lose track somewhere along the way. I'd count that one. Would you come on up and, or find a microphone for us, please?
Another thing to take into consideration would be the amount of young trees in Smith Park currently. And there are not a whole lot of young trees in the park because the bigger trees have overtaken it. There's not a lot of room for them. So in another 50 to, you know, another 25 to 50 years, we could be in a situation where there are trees literally falling down in the park. And we've done nothing to replant or do anything else to replace them. So the future generations have what to look forward to. At least with this way, we're putting six more trees back into the park that in another 100 years, hopefully, somebody's fighting to save because there's another path going in or something. Where this could be a lot more of an issue without the younger trees there.
Is there any way, if you know it now, of them six or seven trees? Any of them hollow or getting hollow? Has anybody?
We've removed quite a bit of dead that has fallen out of them over the years. But it's no different than any other tree in the park. You're going to have that, you know, with a 100-year-old tree. There's definitely some weaker structured trees in the park and stuff like that that we plan to address this spring anyway. Those specific trees, I couldn't tell you, you know, how many branches have fallen out of. But we definitely have picked up larger branches out of those trees in the last few years.
They were not identified by Davy Group as...
As a high-risk tree.
As a high-risk tree. So you can take that for what it's worth.
Any of the six we're talking about?
The six we're talking about were not identified as high-risk.
Okay.
You know, I look at the, when we talked about putting the path in Smith Park, there was great concern then that the trees were going to be negatively impacted by that. And they were not. So I'm a little reluctant to give up on these trees so quickly. You know, I look at the swimming pool parking lot and think, okay, we've got all this land that's already there. It's already paved. I understand we'd be digging it up anyway. But, you know, trading these six trees for green space doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I guess I'm wondering if you can go back and look at...
In fairness, the walking path would be a lot less of an invasive process for the trees. You're not going nearly as deep into the ground.
I understand that, yeah. I understand that. But I guess that's part of my question then. Is there another way to do this? If we don't take as much land on the west side as we're talking about so you wouldn't as negatively impact the trees, you do go a little further east since we seem to have some space there. The jog doesn't bother me. I mean, I think there are a lot of streets that have jogs. And I don't know that I consider that to be a bad thing. But I don't know what that would take in terms of engineering, a second look at engineering to see whether or not it would be reasonable to reconfigure it.
Let me extend that. Howard, if we were to say that we just wanted to replace what is?
Yes.
What would that do to our bidding process? Can we do it for the same price, you think? Is it just a change order or are we talking about a whole rebid?
It would probably be a small change order. There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a whole lot of cost differential at this point. If we kept it as wide as it is currently on the east side by the pool parking lot, then yes, we would have expanded cost for the additional pavement. But if we were to keep that side narrow, but just shift it over to coincide with the jog, it probably wouldn't be that much more expensive.
Now, I want to ask a couple of follow-on questions there. I live in that part of town and drive past Esther's house every day, twice at least. And in the summertime, people do park on a busy pool day on Fourth Street. But they typically park on the west side, so they're in the shade of the trees.
Yeah.
And I can't recall that it's very common for people to park at all on the east side. It's always the west side. They're always parking in the shade late in the day there. Can we narrow that road up and recover whatever cost it would be since that doesn't seem to be used very much for parking at all? And still retain the parking on the west side, which is where everybody wants to park? And do this under the same price structure that we have right now?
I think it would be similar. I mean, we would, we would pull the street in from the east. And we would leave it pretty much where it is on the west side next to the park. And we would need to look at it. There would still be a jog in the road, but not as much of a one at Sylvia Street for the Sylvia Street people. And I think we could accomplish that and keep parking at least enough for people to park on that west side.
I move...
Whether those trees survive, I don't know.
I move we table this and ask the Department of Public Works to come back with some realignment that includes parking on the west side and does what it can to prevent the loss of these.
Question?
I move to table. Second.
Motion, a second to table. That's usually non-debatable. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Item I tonight, our action is to award project 4-13. It's the Stonebridge Road reconstruction project. Howard?
Okay. We opened bids for this project. There were six bidders. Utility portion, $179, $4.71, and 15 cents. City portion, $3.53, $1.22, $95. Overall construction cost, $532, $594. Property owner is going to share in approximately $30,000 of that, leaving the city with just over $500,000. Our combined overall budget was $585, so it is under budget. This contract would be awarded just to one contractor, Rule Construction of Dodgeville, for the underground and street portions. One of the, this would reconstruct the entire length of Stonebridge Road from Main Street to the cul-de-sac. It would be a narrow street with curb and gutter, not allowing for parking along the traveled portion. The areas near the apartment buildings that have parking areas will be rebuilt. And that's what the apartment owners will reimburse the city for reconstructing those parking areas. During this process, we will install new water main that will eliminate a dead end on Stonebridge and a dead end on Fremont and loop in both sides from Union to Fremont and to Main Street. This should improve water quality in those homes and apartments. There's a short piece of storm, sanitary sewer that will be replaced. We will install new storm sewer on the street to include that box culvert. It will be sized to pass a 50-year event. A 100-year event will, could overtop the road slightly in a low area just south of the culvert, not enough to prevent passage of vehicles. During construction, the apartment owners have agreed to allow an easement so that we can construct a temporary driveway from Union Street back to where Stonebridge is right now to allow access for those people while we're reconstructing that culvert. And that temporary access will be removed once Stonebridge is fully back in place.
Will that temporary entrance then have some speed posting or something? Being it's going through the private, off of Union?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be gravel. It's not paved or anything else. I would not expect people to be driving very quickly. And it's a relatively short piece from Union Street to where that, where the apartments are.
Is there a timeline associated with this contract? When is the start date and when is the expected completion? And are there built-in...
Penalties.
Things that if they go over time, that, there are penalties?
Yes. Yes, to all of that. The expected construction start date is June 3rd, after the university is out for the summer. Because many of the student, many of the residents are students, the expected completion date is mid-August prior to the university starting back up again. And yes, there are penalties. I would have to look at the contract to see what the daily rate is.
I move adoption of this contract 413 for the reconstruction of Stonebridge.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're going to move on to work session. We're going to take a five-minute break before we do that. And then we will, following the work session, which is about discontinuance of right-of-way on Water Street where the roundabout is, we'll go into closed session. I'd like someone to make a motion that we go into closed session and then return to adjourn.
Mike? Can I still ask my question to Howard?
Regarding?
From the previous project?
Certainly.
Oh, that's good. I, what was the planned start date for that Fourth Street?
Same? Planned start date would have been June 10th after the public school district is closed, is out for the summer.
I just want to make sure we, if we're going to be able to get back in time for your...
Okay. I make a motion, we go, after work session, we go into closed session per Wisconsin State Statute 1985, P. and 1, P. and C., considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data, et cetera, specifically city manager employment agreement. And that after discussion, we return to open session to adjourn. Second.
The motion is a second. Roll call vote, please.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll take five minutes and then we'll adjourn to...